Kiaotatau. Good afternoon, welcome everyone. It's one o'clock, which brings us to the beginning of this community and culture committee meeting. Welcome councillors, welcome to staff and to members of the public. Before we start the meeting proper, we have three speakers on our public forum list. And I'd like to welcome first up Jordana White from the Cozy Homes Project noting that his worship the mayor is withdrawing from this discussion as chair of the governance body that oversees this work. So, welcome. Are you in charge of driving your own presentations?
Yes.
That's probably...
Is this working?
That's perfect.
Yes, okay, good.
You have five minutes, go for it.
Okay. Tana Kautau, good afternoon, thank you very much for having me. My name is Jordana and I'm the project manager of the Cozy Homes Trust. And I am here today to just give you...
Her mic is on, but I do note a degree of chatter in the room if we could bring that to... It's on. There's just a lot of background noise.
No, it's on. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So I just wanted to come today to give you a quick update on Cozy Homes' work and also to say thank you. DCC is our biggest funder, so it's important for me to express our gratitude for that and as well our gratitude for the support of DCC staff which has been huge. So, thank you very much for that. Now, as you know, Cozy Homes is primarily a health organisation and this image really illustrates why. So if you have a look there on the bottom right, housing is a huge influence on our health. So this is a big social problem, but it's one that we can fix. And we are making some progress. So as you can see, DCC has been a huge funder of insulation programmes, insulation subsidies, and it's not the silver bullet solution to our housing issues, but it's a significant start. And DCC has been a huge part of the progress made in the city in regards to insulation. It's incredibly important, so you should be really proud of the work that you've done. Twenty-five percent of the housing stock is a significant milestone and that's really due in part to your contribution. And although Cozy Homes certainly can't lay claim to having a part in all 12,500 homes that have been insulated, we are having a significant reach into the community as we raise our profile, we get out and send messages about warm homes and healthy homes and give education in the community. We are of course doing this work right alongside the DCC. So we're a big part of the energy plan as a key delivery partner. And we also... A lot of members of this council may not have been around when the social wellbeing strategy was developed, but the public consultation process came back with a lot of feedback again and again about the housing quality in cold and damp homes. So it's really helped shape the social wellbeing strategy and we're speaking directly to that. So while there is some progress being made, it's clear that more work needs to be done and I don't think many people at this table would disagree with that. But it's not just about physical changes to the housing, it's also about education. So a big part of the work that we do in Cozy Homes is getting out into the community and offering education, giving talks, helping people understand what a healthy home looks like and how they can influence it with their behaviours and their habits. So, a lot of people think that the information is out there in the community and that people know what a healthy home looks like and how to achieve a healthy home. And I'm here to tell you that that is absolutely not true. There are a lot of myths out there, a lot of misinformation, a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of marketing that people tend to fall victim to as well. So when I go out into the community, I like to test people's knowledge. I set my talks up like a quiz and I try to debug some myths and I get people engaged and get them talking about what they're doing in their homes and what they need to be doing in their homes. And I thought as a quick exercise today, I would do the same for you. So I'm just gonna do a quick activity here where I test a little bit of your knowledge. These are just two questions that I ask out in the community. So, my first question is, for good health, what is the minimum temperature your bedroom should be overnight? Fourteen, sixteen, eighteen degrees or no standard? Depends on the individual. And I would love for you just to shout out, in Public Gallery, please chime in with what you think it is, because this could be quite a good illustration.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Three.
B? Three, fourteen? I'm hearing pretty much every answer but D. This is good illustration. The answer is actually sixteen degrees. And just by a quick show of hands, how many of you heat your bedrooms overnight? Nobody is raising their hand. Okay, so this is illustrating, again, what, yep, sixteen degrees overnight, World Health Organisation minimum standards for health, okay? This is really important. Unheated bedrooms are a significant health risk. And in Dunedin in particular, we do not have a culture of heating our bedrooms and that has to change. And I'm just gonna point out the bottom piece here. Electric blankets and hot water bottles are not heaters. Okay? I don't care how warm and cosy you are in that bed, if you're breathing in twelve-degree air, you are at risk. So a lot of people don't make the connection between the air temperature and how comfortable they are. Next question, true or false, single glazed windows with good curtains can outperform double glazing? False. Anyone in the Public Gallery? They're quiet now, they think they're gonna be wrong. Very controversial, but the answer is actually true. I'll put an asterisk there, but if the double glazed windows have really good curtains, they of course are going to outperform the single glazing, but that's just a technicality. So I don't have a lot of time to run through all the components of really high-performing curtains, but I just want you to know, they're a really critical piece of a house's performance. We are really, really lucky to have the Dunedin Curtain Bank in town. They perform a service that is just so important and people don't really realise how technical the work they do is in regards to keeping our houses warm and keeping them efficient. If anybody wants to talk to me about good curtains, give me a call. This photo actually is quite a good illustration as well as why your curtains need to actually touch the floor. Look how cold that air is at the bottom. So that's just wanted to give you a little bit of flavour of the work that we do and sort of the lack of knowledge in the community. And I hope you all go home tonight and think about heating your bedroom. So, housing quality is a concern for everybody in this room. We simply cannot be one of the world's great small cities with poor quality housing, with cold and damp housing. This is a broad social problem, but it's one that we can actually fix. And I just would like to point out, there was no funding in this year's national budget for insulation subsidies. We do still have one year left for the subsidies that were granted last year, but there's been no signal from the government that future subsidies will become available. We don't, we don't have any indication that... We also don't know who the government will be, but that's a different story. So really the time for planning is now. We can fix this, but it has to be, the planning has to be at this level now. We cannot count on the central government to continue with their insulation subsidies. So although I'm not really here to ask anything of you in particular today, I want you to start thinking about what mechanisms you have available as a council to make further traction in this and to start putting some resources together. In particular, I am considering at this time, I have not made a final decision on what this looks like, but I will be asking the city council most likely to be preparing a targeted rate for housing quality improvement, for insulation, heating and other housing quality improvement work. I'm not here to do that today, but it's just a signal to you that is something that I'm putting together, Cozy Homes is putting together. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your presentation, far be it from this group to have an opinion on decisions of central government funding or otherwise. Questions, Councilor Benson Pope?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Also, that figure you mentioned early on of thirty percent across the city renting, do you have a breakdown by area of the city further to that or is that, that figure the only one available?
That's the only figure that I have available. My understanding is there is not actually a very clear way of delineating which properties are being rented and which are not. So in terms of the geographical spread, I don't know.
Thank you. Councilor Vandivers?
Through the chair, I'm very interested in your sixteen degrees overnight and noted, I think, that nobody here heats their bedroom. And the ambient temperature would be twelve degrees at best? You're saying that's a health risk?
Yes, that's correct. And twelve degrees in the winter would be quite ambitious. In fact, for most Dunedin houses, they're not achieving that.
Right, some of them might be five or six.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions. One of them is, how do you account for the European idea that a cool room is something you sleep better in? And that I have relatives that have lived to very ripe old ages who routinely slept outside in minus ten degrees. How does that square with a need for sixteen?
Yep, so, I'm not a doctor, but my understanding is certainly the issue is around the dampness of the air and not necessarily the temperature.
So it's dampness rather than temperature?
So, cold damp air is, the damp seems to have more influence than the cold necessarily. And if you look at some, I'm from a very cold climate in North America and we have extremely dry air in the winter and it makes a big difference. So the dampness seems to be the closer associated with health issues.
Just so that I could get some, you know, independent sort of information on it, is it possible for you to email us some study that gives you the twelve-degree risk?
Sure, yep.
Yeah? Just some information on it?
Yep, I know, I know the source on that, so that's not a problem.
Excellent, great. Yeah, no, that's, I'd just like to be able to clarify that and who knows, I might even start running a heater.
Please, please do.
Thank you.
Councilor O'Malley?
Thanks very much for the presentation. When you're talking, I've got two questions. The first one is, when you're talking about rental properties, what percentage would you say are not adequately...
I don't, I don't think I would hazard a guess on that.
And then, what's the definition of adequate insulation when it comes to floor, ceiling and walls and glazing?
Yep, that's a fair question. The ICA's is the source of that thirty percent number. So they, we know that twenty-five percent of Dunedin's housing stock has been insulated recently with, through various DCC programmes. And then ICA estimates that another five percent have just been completed on the private market. And I think they would, their description of adequate would be if it doesn't require a top-up to get to the 3.3 R value in the ceiling and the 1.9 in the underfloor.
So most of floor and ceiling?
It's entirely based on floor and ceiling, yep. We don't have any standards around wall insulation at this point in time, it's just, we need to stick with the basics, with the floor and ceiling at this point.
Councilor Roder?
Thank you Chair. At this point, the government is not looking at funding insulation in the eighteen, nineteen years, is that right?
My understanding is, well, we, sort of, the government or ICA has signalled that this would be the last, this last programme would be the last one. So that was announced, it rolled out last year beginning July 1st and it runs through June 30th of next year. That, they have said that before, so we just don't know if they're going to continue or not, but we have, we've been told not to count on it.
Okay, so would it be helpful for this council to send a letter to them regarding concerns about that, particularly as we have quite a poor housing stock, just in support of keeping it?
I don't think it could hurt, I don't know how much it will help.
Thank you.
Further questions? No? Thank you Jordana.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Mr Alan Shanks from Connect South, the artist formerly known as Council of Social Services Dunedin, formerly known as Dunedin Council of Social Services. You've got five minutes, Alan, we're in your hands.
Start now. Thanks Mr Chairman and for the councillors to give me the opportunity to share in some information that hopefully you'll be informed and maybe surprised. I just wanna make an acknowledgement though, to thank the Dunedin City Council for their continued support over the past thirty-eight years and for the continued relationship that we have with the council. From the next slide, you'll notice that we are involved in quite a considerable amount of activity and I thought without, the time I've got, I should point out probably three components of what we have created as an organisation to meet some of the trend that's happening within our sector. First of all, we refer to reduce cost. In the last three or four years, we created a particular insurance scheme for non-profit organisations specifically so that they can reduce some of the high cost of insurance premiums. The scheme has been so successful that we've now rolled it out nationally. Also, the Dunedin Community Accounting has been a continued asset for a lot of treasurers within the city. And this has been a collaboration between the Dunedin City Council, the University of Otago and Sport Otago. And I can say that we have had some really amazing results where it's a free service, so a lot of treasurers, particularly with small organisations, just need a little bit of an uplift in getting some information resources. The other one that we commenced just over eighteen months ago was the SSPP, which is the Southern Service Provider Partnership. Now, we've created a model here, we've brought together a lot of small mental health providers and by bringing them together, we've been able to give them some infrastructure around governance and how they can actually deliver their service more effectively. So it's something that, a model that's really starting to be shared with other small providers. Now statistically, you may not realise that in Dunedin, eighty-seven point five percent of the sector have made up of small organisations. And you'll see also that they provide a service into the community that I think is undervalued so often. And I'm taking statistics for Dunedin, we're not talking about Otago or New Zealand. They also rely on a lot of volunteer work, so if you, it's hard to see on that particular screen there, that the smaller organisations are reliant on a lot of voluntary capacity to actually keep them sustainable. And as you go into the larger ones, that becomes smaller. On the other side of the screen here, you've got the expenditure of Dunedin charities by size. Collectively, the expenditure of the last twelve months was $248 million. And again, I think we undervalue just how much the sector, particularly around, a lot of service providers are providing into the city through wages and providing sort of overheads. Two-hundred-and-forty-eight million dollars spread over the three categories. This is where it becomes a little bit concerning. And we appreciate there's a lot of change and challenges happening within the sector. But last twelve months up to the statistics we had in May, one-third of the charities that are currently registered were in deficit. The average was twenty-three thousand Ks, the largest one was eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand K deficit for that twelve-month period and we had a medium there of around about six K. So you can see that we're in a fairly volatile sort of environment and really from our perspective as organisation, we don't wanna see some of these organisations falling over and not being sustained financially. The next screen, I'm hoping not going too fast, and I'm not expecting you to take in all this particular content here, but the sector is under a lot of pressure. Most of you may be aware, I'm not sure, the charity services now require some very extensive standard reporting requirements and that applies to any organisation, be it a hundred-dollar turnover to twenty-nine million dollar turnover. The requirement and standards now are applicable right across the board. There's been quite significant changes to the government contractors, mainly through MSD. And also, one that's been getting a lot of publicity in the last probably three or four months is the individual client-level data collection. And this is becoming really quite a political football. So I've just highlighted some real sort of areas where particularly small charities are now starting to become a little bit vulnerable because of the fact that they are more, needing to make some more compliant. So where do we come into it? Well, we've taken up the challenge as an organisation to basically say, we're not gonna sit back and let this sort of happen. Now, I've given you a little bit of a handout there. This particular slide is in the middle of that particular handout. And what it's really saying is, at an organisation, we've met the challenge for the twenty-first century of what's happening in the non-profit sector. From that particular matrix there, you'll see some areas of four components of circles and the particular one I just want you to probably focus on is the blue one around the outside, that is where the area of need is. The green one is really the cost recovery of what some of the work that we do in the sector for organisations. The darker green or darker blue is where we are actually giving support to organisations free of, free of charge. And so, and then the middle one is really the signposting or sharing and guiding of what the sector is all about. So we, we believe that if we're going to see the particular in Dunedin are really vibrant and a wellbeing within our community, we've got to have organisations that are providing really strong services at the face value. And we come into it through helping and supporting and giving guidance in this particular area. And so my little catchphrase at the end is, nonprofits are important to Dunedin, our nonprofits need help, we are here to help, you helping us lets us help them. So thank you, if there's anything that anyone would like to just query or question or think I'm a bit over the top, please just say.
Thanks Alan. Questions, Councilor Vandivers?
Specifically, what help would you like?
Sorry, what was that?
Sorry. Specifically, what help would you like?
Well, I'm not putting my hand up and saying money. Look, I think, Councilor...
You wouldn't be the first.
I think that we probably really need to just be a bit more sort of transparent with the council as to some of the trends that are happening with the sector and how they're being affected by either through government changes or even through maybe even local body changes. I think we just need to continue building that relationship and I'm pretty grateful the fact that we're starting to do that with some of the good staff that you've got here in the council. We've brought on some really skilled and experienced staff into our organisation to meet some of the challenges that are happening within the sector and I'm really privileged to be able to have some staff that are now meeting some of the need, creating some really good connections and collaboration. So I think, it may not answer your question, but continue to call.
It's helpful. Again, through the chair, does the current government action of delisting a number of charities that have either not been performing or not met criteria, is that something that is of concern to you as well or was that sort of something that needed to tidy up anyway?
No, I think, it's a true statement, I think there is concerns, that there has been some agenda, but I don't wanna sort of get too political about it, that to be fair, the government are investing a lot of money into the sector and they obviously wanna return as to where this money's going and how it's being used properly. So to be fair, I think the sector has had a bit of a kick in the backside to say, you need to get your act together. And I think some of the accountability process through the charity services, through what MSD are trying to create, is more robust organisation. Now, some may fall over and that's probably a sad indictment on maybe their, having got their systems or processes or their governance in order, but I think from our perspective as an organisation locally for Dunedin, we don't, we wanna preserve as many organisations we can. Some may have to be more open to collaboration, but I think there is some evidence to show that the government's policies does in some ways affect them and that's a bit unfortunate.
On the same subject, are you able to somehow facilitate some of these, let's say, poorer performing charities or underperforming charities?
Correct.
Actually come together and perhaps operate as a single entity that would meet criteria?
Sure, we're now working very closely with a number of organisations who have come to us to put their hand up for help. We're looking at different ways to see how they can maybe collaborate or maybe form partnerships and to give some strength to not only their financial sustainability, but also their governance. And so we've, as I say, fortunate having staff who are now able to actually bring that to the reality and there is some really good stuff happening.
And do you, finally, do you see a DCC role for that as well or is that something that you feel that you can undertake?
Definitely, I... No, I think we've started some good dialogue with some of the staff within the DCC to work through some of that supportive role and I think we can't do it on our own, I think we need to hold hands and really make some good impact. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If I might, just on that, in terms of your data around the number of nonprofits operating in deficit in that last financial year, are they organisations that you're dealing with directly or is that just a dataset from charities commission?
It is data that we've collected from charities services, but in saying that, we have had in recent weeks, two or three of the small organisations who are quite vulnerable, there's been a bit of publicity around their sustainability, have come to us and said, we would like some support, so we are working with them to just work through some process to how we can help.
Great, thank you. Councilor Gary?
Thank you for your presentation, Alan, and thank you for the work you do, important work you do in our community. I had two questions, the first you've partly answered, but I just wanted a bit more clarification. The third, that are in deficit, is this a new phenomenon, a recent phenomenon?
Well, no, I think there has been a trend where some of these organisations are being affected by sort of funding, the funding process. I mean, it's getting quite competitive around funding models that are being followed and I think the danger is that some of the organisations have put all their eggs in one basket, so they've been reliant on some really extensive funding models traditionally, but now the whole game has changed. So I think there has to be a little bit more diversity as to how funding is obtained.
Thank you. My second question is, have you noticed a trend, as we've perhaps seen in other areas, where a lot of the nonprofits have a lot of volunteer capacity?
Yes.
And then they get, they're so effective that they then need paid staff and that increases their overheads. Would that be fair to say?
That's true, I mean, I did an interview on the radio this morning with a small organisation that's probably under-resourced where they're reliant on sustainability is purely around volunteer support, but it can't, it can't be managed all on volunteers because they can be quite transit in some cases. So this organisation really needs to be, I think, supportive with another maybe paid staff to really help them through the next phase of their development.
Thank you very much, Alan.
Councilor O'Malley?
Thanks Alan for your presentation. My question's around obtaining metrics and following spending. To what extent, how much of the money that comes from government is then spent back on establishing the metrics that they're looking for to make sure that they're being efficient?
Oh, now you've got me a wee bit. I think from some of the information that I was in Wellington just recently, the level of funding that the government are putting into a lot of the sector hasn't decreased. I think what's been really more apparent is that they're actually being more aggressive in how they're actually investing that money. And I think that the sector probably really hasn't cottoned on to that at the moment. So there is quite clear evidence and a move, and we're part of that ongoing sort of collaboration to make sure that they're not actually caught up in the wash. But I think that the government are aware that there is some gaps and some holes that need to be sort of considered. Yes.
Further questions? No? Thanks Alan, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity, thank you.
And last but not least, Kath Cocker?
And Taya Wells.
And Taya Wells? Great. You don't get done all the time though.
No.
Kath Cocker and Taya Wells are local artists, they were, Kath wanted to talk about public art, that's the only brief I got, but I'm about, I'm sure we're about to find out more.
I read, I read the submission to, for the public art, the public arts submission from the Dunedin Public Art Gallery and I was concerned about the idea of it being in-house because I'm a sculptor and I have, I will do public art. I think if it's in-house, then it narrows down the broader group of artists that there are that are outside of public galleries. And I thought that the Wellington Public Sculpture Trust had a really good way of doing it, where they had an independent body. That still had people from all the different places, like all the, they had a person from the Public Art Gallery and they've got people from various other art organisations that are involved in it. And I also think it'd be good to have a sculptor involved that's not practising. Because I just think it's, I just think it's better if they're not, or an artist, any artist, so somebody that, you know, just people that understand art really, and artists do tend to, from what I've seen. And Taya wants to say something.
Hi, I'm involved in a public sculpture, hopefully being built at the end of the year in Plymouth through the Gavett Brewster. They have a... Now, he's transparent about it, but I think the issue of I follow what Kath is saying is that, I mean, our gallery at the moment, our public gallery, I mean, what percentage of work being shown there is work that's not part of the gallery system, the commercial gallery system already? Because there's a lot of artists that are not part of the gallery system, and they're not, basically this is a streamlining, what you're proposing at the moment is a streamlining of the process.
Sorry?
I think the danger is by streamlining the process, which I appreciate that you need to be a small, robust group to make strong artworks, good decisions, risky decisions sometimes, but I don't, you know, democracy, art by democracy is not often, or by panel is often fraught with mediocrity. But the problem is access, I think. If you streamline the process too much, you're going to have John McCormick's artists a part of his gallery being, getting public sculpture deals, which is great for him, but it really isn't a model, I think, that is democratic or transparent, I think, for artists that are not part of the commercial gallery system, which there are some great, great artists out there, old artists, new artists, that don't have representation right now and should be allowed to be a part of the process. And I know in the wording of the report, the document, that there is some provision for recognising independent trusts. I think it's just whether how real, what kind of commitment that really boils down to, when it is about money and, you know, who's going to be driving it? How are you going to make artists that are not part of the system already attractive to be able to get them to be able to participate in the system? Does that make sense? Because at the moment, you're making it so unattractive for artists that are not part of the commercial system, that you basically just ignore them, that they won't be part of the consideration process. It'll just be seen as too difficult, too hard. Does that make sense? Too many issues. Basically, what we're saying is that the market vets, right, artists that are easier to work with or not, but that's not true. That's just what's being pushed here, I think, through this idea of having an in-house system. So.
Can I ask, if you're happy to take questions?
Yes, no, sorry. A bit of rambling.
No, that's fine. And there will be a public process in terms of getting feedback on this through July, so there's plenty of opportunity to give feedback on to, feedback of your concerns or ambitions for what this might end up looking like, because I appreciate that the document at present is very high level. But what is it about the structure of, say, the new Plymouth system that you think insulates itself from being essentially, you know, captured by the dealer's system?
I don't think-
That's right.
I basically was trying to say that I'm very much on both sides of the argument here. I'm seeing I might be benefiting from the in-house kind of appearances of the new Plymouth system, but I also see the dangers of that system as well. And I think that the way that the report is at the moment written, it doesn't adequately address the danger. And I'm-
It's only got one thing against it underneath it, you know how they've got the things for and against underneath, all the possibilities of-
Sorry, for clarity, can I ask which document it is that you're speaking on?
The McCormick-
The report, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Not us, not us.
All the other ones have got lists of problems that are possible, except for the one, which is the in-house one, and then it's only got one possible problem, but there's actually quite a few, I think. I was hesitant.
If your question's for Tao, that might be difficult right now, but you can give it a go. Council of Vandivers.
Kath, you've got a great showstopper there, by the way.
I know.
You mentioned the Wellington model.
Yeah.
Is the Wellington model, in your opinion, something that we could usefully adopt here?
I think that part, yeah, definitely, that it could be looked at as a possible structure.
And the reason for your opinion is that you've actually seen the Wellington model work in a way that you think is more transparent, I think you used?
Well, there's a lot of, yeah, well, from my perspective of this, but, I mean, there's a lot of sculpture in Dunedin, I mean, in Wellington, everywhere you go, there's just like, sculpture's everywhere, and that is one thing that I've really noticed in Dunedin. I know that's kind of off the point, but it's part of it.
Well, actually, that leads to my next question, and that is, I agree that we are very light on sculpture. We've only recently started to get some artwork outside of buildings. Do you have a list, or do you have a number of places around the city that you think really do need a sculpture in order to make them a complete place? Have you got, you know, suggestions for where sculptures might be suitably positioned?
Oh, I think they could be suitably positioned anywhere on the DCC sites.
Okay, so what you're saying is that DCC land would be open slather, and you'd fill them with all the sculptures that you could provide, and they were of a standard-
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that I think that there needs to be, I think that a sculpture trust would be, having an independent sculpture trust would be a better way of deciding where the sculptures go and what, with a subcommittee of engineers and architects and people that can actually help, that have an understanding.
Okay, and that's what Wellington have already done in their model?
Yes, some, but I'd say-
Can we, like, go on the internet and see what the Wellington model is? Okay, so that's something that we could do to see if it's-
The criticism of the Wellington model is that it, again, only supports the artists that have already been accepted into the market, dealer's system. And so you get a very particular type of art, it's very much ornaments on a mantelpiece kind of thing. Yes, there are the occasional short-term project of stuff, but I think what's missing from this overall discussion around public art is discussion, and how do we facilitate public discussion around public art? You know, that seems to me a very significant part, a very difficult part, but it's often looks for ways to be railroaded around rather than made centerpiece.
Do you recognise that from our point of view, none of us being particular artists here, that whenever in the past we have decided on moles or whatever-
Yeah.
-that whatever we've decided on-
You'll get a room.
-an enormous amount of flak.
Yes, but I think that, I think you've been badly sold the role of what public art is supposed to be doing, I think. In a democracy, displays of shared wealth through monuments are supposed to be points that are discussed, and it's the discussion that brings us together, whether we dislike it or like it, it's the discussion and the depth of the detail around that discussion that is important. I mean, if we talk about the teeth around the poet's mouth, I mean, I've only been in this city for a year, but the vision about whether that is funny or in poor taste, because it's too obvious, it's teeth in a mouth, is amazing. I thought it was hilarious, but I think the point is that these things are talking points, and they're good for tourists to focus on, and the danger is if they're not talking points, they flop. The, I mean, what is being talked about, I think, needs more PR, it needs to be more directed, it needs to be more informed, it needs to be educated about what this is about and why are we building this, and what it's, you know, be transparent about who this is, what part of the community this is.
Okay, so I guess the Wellington model isn't ideal either, but-
Council of Vandivers.
-would be a step in the right direction, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't think we have, I don't think, this is a new thing, I think, the idea that sculpture, you know, the Bill Bower Museum has relit this idea that sculpture can be money for cities, for, you know, struggling little cities in the middle of nowhere. Tourists come to see these things because they're different. Now, what is that point of difference takes real engagement, and where are you going to get those people from? Money is going to drive some of those people, and people with ideas are going to have those ideas as well. So-
The reason why I think of Wellington, that as an idea, as a structural idea, is just that you're going to have a lot of people, there's going to be a wider spectrum of people that are going to be involved in the conversation about who decides and who doesn't, who's decided or who doesn't. And I mean, I have exhibited publicly without being part of the dealership in Dunedin, I'll just say that.
Yeah.
So it does happen.
This discussion is fruitful and personally interesting, but this isn't particularly the forum for it.
Yeah.
But if anyone has questions, preferably brief, for Kath and Tao, who are taking different sides of an argument, which makes it difficult, but, Council Gary.
Thank you for that, and that is a really valuable discussion. I thank you for coming in to have it with us, and I hope that we have another opportunity to have that further discussion with you. You possibly partly answered the question, but I just wanted some clarity, because I don't think everyone around the table would necessarily know what you're talking about when you say not part of the dealer market, the commercial market. Can you just briefly and succinctly just explain that, please?
Basically, it's about access to getting in the gallery. It's a lot easier for artists that are represented by dealers to get access into public galleries because the gallery doesn't have to deal with the artist who's-
So what proportion of-
Well, that would be a very interesting question, to find out what would be the statistics of artists being shown in a public gallery that aren't represented by a dealer gallery? Because as I understand, I would imagine it being very, very, very low. So, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that, and thank you for raising it. I think it's a very valuable comment.
As the beneficiary benefactor of the dealer system, I have to be very careful here. Council Alder.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Hi, thanks for doing that in-depth investigation about models and coming here to feedback. I think public art is fantastic because it's democratic art. People don't have to go to the art gallery to see it, so it empowers and envisions us all. And I too looked at the Wellington model, and would you say one of the benefits of having an independent trust is in fact that trust can actually raise money independently, a bit like the Dunedin Street Art Trust?
Yeah, that's what the new Plymouth one does as well. New Plymouth one raises, I think, two-thirds of its budget is private.
Yeah, that's really good. The other thing I did want to say really, really quickly, is that the difference between the art market, which is the dealers, and art, is that art is, oh, sorry, I just lost it. It's all right. Just went out of my head.
I do that, too.
The dealer galleries are the art market, that's where you're selling art, and then there's art that's actually just created and as an expression from an artist, so it's like-
It's a thesis unto itself, really.
Thank you.
Yeah, the market, the gold plating of artists through public sculpture is well and truly-
Yeah, but those things come back, yeah.
But thank you. Thank you both of you coming on. It's been great to have your input, and I would implore you to do this more formally through that process in July, to the degree that you are willing and able.
So will we write something out?
Yeah, so there'll be, there'll be public submissions from the third of July through until the eleventh of August, and the full gamut of what you want it to look like, where you want it to be, how it should be governed, the sky's the limit. So you can start working on that now if you wish, it could take a while. Thank you. Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to Ms Gosford, babysitting out there, appreciate that.